Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brooks Keel. I'm the president of Augusta University, and it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. And I am joined by my esteemed colleague, the interim provost Zach Kelleher, and we greatly appreciate the chance to be with you during this town hall. You know, we always wish we could do these in person, and it's a little strange to be sitting in an empty, virtually an empty auditorium, but we thought it was important to try to provide you with as much up-to-date information as we can and to try to answer as many questions as we can. There were a number of questions that have been submitted to various forums, and we sort of collected all those together. And at the end of this presentation, we'll try to address those questions. We try to go through those questions as best we can. And I've encouraged Dr. Kelleher to chime in whenever he feels necessary and to try to either add to or correct me if I'm wrong. He's promised me he won't ever correct me, but I'm sure he will if I'm ever wrong. So, and I certainly would depend on that. But again, we appreciate the opportunity to spend a little time with you. I want to go ahead with the presentation here if we can. You know, today is a special day in the lives of any of us here. It is 9/11, and that term itself carries very special meaning because it is the anniversary of the tragic events that were associated with September 11th in 2001. And I don't want to pass up the opportunity to just say we need to take a moment sometime during this day and just think about the thousands of individuals that were killed during that day during the attack, but also think about the countless number of first responders, our policemen, firemen, our EMS, and a variety of others. And if you have a chance today or in the near future, take a moment to thank one of those first responders for the great work that they do day in and day out. I think 9/11 certainly does remind us of that. And I hope that sometime during this day, you'll take a moment and join me in remembering and also being grateful. It is back to school time. We are finishing up the fifth week of class, and we're full steam ahead. And so far, by all accounts, it is being a very successful, very productive semester, and I'm really excited to see us back in class. You know, we've used the term "the new normal," and this virus, if nothing else, has forced us to think about things differently. And it is a new normal, but because things are changing so rapidly, and I got to tell you, I mean, it's miles away from getting used to it because it's going to continue to change rapidly, that it's not just the new normal, it is the now normal. And I think we have to think about things as what are we doing right now and not think too far down the road because things can change and things will change. And I know it's been incredibly dynamic situation, and that creates a lot of uncertainty and a lot of frustration for all of us, and I appreciate that. I certainly do. But I tell you, our faculty and our staff and our students have just done such an incredible job in the face of this uncertainty. And I'm really proud of every single one of you and incredibly grateful for all that you do. Now, I've said many times, and I never get tired of saying it, and I hope you never get tired of hearing it, we have one priority at Augusta University, and that's our patients and our students. And our whole mission revolves around providing an outstanding educational opportunity for our students and providing state-of-the-art, absolute-quality care for our patients. But during this opening of this particular semester especially and during the last six months, the health and safety of our priority has also become a real priority for us. And we want to always do everything we can to not only provide the educational and the patient care environment, but to provide a safe environment for our faculty and staff so that they can carry out those missions. And that's always will remain a priority for us. You know, as we started going into the fall semester, there was a great deal of uncertainty about what impact COVID-19 might have on our enrollment. And enrollment is such a very important aspect about any university, and it's no different here at Augusta University. So as we went into the semester, we were really holding our breath and keeping our fingers crossed. And I just want to share with you just a little bit of data to show you that our enrollment now is strong. In fact, it is stronger than it has been in nearly 10 years and is stronger than it has been in quite some time. If you look at this graph, the red numbers on the left side, and this shows you the total enrollment from 2010 to 2020, so over a 10-year period of time. The red numbers from 2010 to 2015 show you a progressively decreasing enrollment at our institution. You see there just before 2013, the beginning of 2013, when consolidation actually happened. And during the first half of this decade, we saw, on average, a 3.2% year-over-year decrease in enrollment. Though beginning in 2015, that tide has turned dramatically. And in fact, for the last five years, including this current semester, we have seen, on average, a 2.8% positive increase in enrollment even in the face of the pandemic. The last, quote, official, I won't say official, the last numbers that we have, the student affairs have given us, is 9,557. You see it in quotes there. And the reason it's in quotes is that our official census, if you will, of what our student population will be will not take place until October. But we, our enrollment looks really, really strong, and I am incredibly excited about what this means, especially when you compare it to where we've been over the last decade. And that is due to a lot of people working at a lot of hours to try to make this happen. And I don't ever want to pass up the opportunity to say thanks to our faculty and staff for everything that you have done to ensure that, first, we are open and have face-to-face instruction, but that we have such a strong enrollment. And that's due to the great work of our faculty. And I've got here, I think, just a beautiful example of how, of the ingenuity of our faculty and the creativeness of our faculty. This is a virtual biology lab book, Biology 1101: Fundamentals of Biology, produced by three of our faculty. And having been a biology major myself at this very institution, believe me, the term "virtual" in biology, you would never see in the same sentence when I was in school here. And now, we've come to a point to where we actually have had an incredible manual, a lab book, that helps us provide that sort of environment for our students. So I really, and this is just one example of many examples across our entire academic platform. And I just want to say thanks to all of our faculty for the incredible work that you have done in the face of a pandemic. We have a very unique situation at Augusta University. We are the only university in the entire 26 campus system of the University System of Georgia that has a medical school and a health center and a hospital. We are the state's dedicated health sciences medical college, and that's codified in the Board of Regents Institution of Mission statements, the only one in the system in that way. And we're the state's only public academic medical center. And that carries a great deal of responsibility for us statewide, but also carries a great deal of opportunity for us as a campus community because we have so much of the expertise that we all depend on during a pandemic, and we have it right here as part of our university. And I think we have to keep that in mind. We are really very fortunate that we're in that position. You know, it was back in the middle of March before we first had a COVID-19 positive patient. The first COVID patient positive in Georgia was on March the 2nd, and I was in the early morning hours of March the 15th. The photograph that you see on the far left there is Dr. Colhey in our pathology gym lab, who is showing us his lab design, in-house lab-designed COVID-19 test on March the 13th. Two days later, he got FDA emergency authorization approval to start, for that test, and we began to do testing in-house. At that time, it was the only in-house COVID-19-developed test in any lab in the state that wasn't part of the CDC or the Department of Health. And that really, I think, was a hallmark of what this great university can do because it is such a comprehensive university. And we approached the COVID-19 testing in a three-pronged approach. We had to find a way to screen patients, especially in the early part of the pandemic, to determine who needs to be tested, had to find a safe and convenient way for patients to be sampled, to collect the sample in order to do the testing. We had to have the in-house test to do that. And our faculty and staff here at AU Health System and Medical College of Georgia allowed us to do just that. And it was so successful that, as you know, Governor Kemp asked us in the middle of April to help him take this process statewide in conjunction with the Department of Health and with the National Guard. And it gave us a tremendous opportunity to show the rest of the state, and indeed, the rest of the country, just what Augusta University truly is and how meaningful it is for our area and for our state. Just to give you some idea of the magnitude of this impact, I mentioned the screening. We started off doing the Regents-only live telehealth platform dedicated to COVID-19. We started doing that early on, and we also had hotline telephone calls that folks would call in if they didn't have access to a smartphone. Since the beginning and as of September the 10th yesterday, we've done over 20,000 telemedicine, tele-screen visits. We've processed over 54,000 hotline calls, so a total of 74,211 contacts. These are patients in the state of Georgia and in some of our neighboring states who have contacted AU Health System to try to get scheduled to have testing done. Tremendous work that we have done, not only for the citizens of this community, but for the entire state. And this graph shows you the daily volume of sampling. Now, we've set up the Regents' first drive-through sampling facility where a patient could pull up in their automobile once they're scheduled, roll down the window, and a healthcare provider could take the sample right in their car, never have to leave the car. Very safe and convenient for the patient, but also very safe and convenient for our healthcare providers as well. And if you look at the black closed circles on this graph, it shows you the daily number of samples that we did. And back in the, you know, the April/May timeframe, we were doing roughly 200 to 300 a day. We saw a spike in the beginning of the summer, especially in the July and middle of summer, in July and August, to over 1,000 samples a day we're processing through our drive-by facility. The blue line that you see there is the seven-day rolling average to sort of smooth out some of the variability that we might see from day to day. And I think that shows you the tremendous amount of activity that we've been doing. 69,510 nasal pharyngeal swab samples that were processed through our drive-through and walk-up facilities here, right here on campus at Augusta University. This shows you the positivity rate. This is the percent, for every day, the percentage of all those samples that we do, how many are actually positive, and gives you a general idea of what the prevalence of the coronavirus is in the community upon which that you're sampling. The green closed symbol shows you that positivity rate for each day, and the black line, again, is the seven-day rolling average. And you can see that we also had a spike in positivity. Back in the early August timeframe, it got as high as about 25%. But one thing you will notice is that that has been trending downward. And it's been trending downward throughout the month of August and into the month of September. You see the dotted line there, the vertical dotted line showing the start of classes on the tail end of that positivity rate, and the face of classes starting has also been going downhill. And we are very, very happy and very, very glad to see that indeed. But to me, one of the other key statistics to keep in mind is how many patients do we actually have in our hospital right now that are positive for COVID-19? So this shows you the daily in-house census for Augusta University Medical Center of COVID-19, going back to the early parts of March. The red dots show you the daily census, and the black line, again, is the rolling seven-day average. And you can see that, again, in April, when we thought we were in the midst of the first real surge of coronavirus, in fact, we were. The highest number of patients we saw in our hospital was about 29. You can see that we've had a fairly steep increase in those number of patients throughout the summer. And for the entire month of August, we had more than 60 patients in any one day in our health system. But a couple of things about that. Again, you can see when classes started, we started at the height of that, and it has been going down ever since. And especially in the last week or so, a fairly dramatic decrease in the number of patients that are COVID-positive in our hospital. We've also know a heck of a lot more now about how to treat patients than we did back in March when this pandemic first started. We also have discovered that our patients, we don't have as much ventilator use for our patients, and we're able to manage those patients much better now. So we are what appears to be on a downhill slide on this. And again, we're most grateful, most thankful for that. If you want to know how we compare with the rest of the state, this shows you similar data for the state of Georgia. This was as of yesterday, September the 10th. On the left side, you see that yellow line is the seven-day rolling average, a moving average, for the percent positive for the state of Georgia. And on the right side, you see the actual number of COVID-19 positive cases for the state of Georgia. And again, that yellow line is a seven-day rolling average. If we compare that trend with what I just showed you, this shows us on the left, the AU Health System percent positive, and on the right, the AU Health System number of cases. And if you go back and forth on these two, but just for a minute, you can see that they overlay quite nicely. And what this tells me is that what we're seeing here in Augusta, it is mirrored in the state. Sometimes, the periodicity will be shifted left to right, but by and large, the trends are the same. The trends are going downward, both in the state and here in Augusta University Health System. And again, we're very, very excited and very, very glad to see that. In terms of the number of students and the number of faculty and staff we have on the university side of the house, that are COVID-19 positive, that have reported as COVID-19 positive, we are reporting these numbers now on a weekly basis. This shows you the data for the weeks ending on August 14, 21, 28, September 4, and September 11. This is a little preliminary. These numbers for September 11 were as of the morning yesterday. I've already had confirmed employees. We'll get confirmation on students, but this will give you an idea of what the trends are. The blue bar is the number of faculty and staff for that week. The green bar is the number of students for that week. The numbers that are written at the top of the bar is the total for that week. And then, the red line that you see there is the cumulative number of all faculty, staff, and students going back to August the 1st, which is some nine days or so before campus, we even fully started campus. Well, we thought it was important to get that cumulative number, and you can see that it's less than, or right at 150 cumulative since we first started looking at this data back in August the 1st. And most of those individuals, good many of those individuals have already finished their quarantine and isolation and are back in class or back in their office. And I am told that of all the patients, excuse me, of all the faculty, staff, and students that have reported positive have all been mild to moderate symptoms, and none of these individuals have required hospitalization. So we, again, are very, very fortunate and very glad to see that the relatively low number of cases, especially compared to what you will sometimes see at other institutions in the state. As I said, we have been publishing these data, and you can find these data at jaguar.augusta.edu/coronavirus. We have been showing the health system statistics for the last four or five months or so, and we've now added the university-specific statistics on a weekly basis. And I'm also providing a weekly, short video that provides some context around the numbers and a summarization of the numbers, any other events that have taken place during the week, any change in protocols, or anything that we think you might find useful or informative, to try to give you, try to keep you up to date as much as we can. As much as we can, we are collecting data as of 12 noon each Friday, and then we're posting that data, hopefully, almost always by close of business on Monday along with this short video. We hope that you find this information informative. I would be, I'd greatly appreciate any feedback that you have, if there are things that we're not covering that you'd like for us to. Within our ability, we can do that, and we hope, again, that you find this information useful. Let me also refer you again to our website at augusta.edu/covid-resources. There is a wealth of information on this website in terms of what our reopening plans are, what our contingency plans are, if, in the event, if we ever have to go back fully online, and we don't anticipate that, and any other information specific to faculty, staff, and students regarding COVID-19. So please take advantage of the resources that you can find there. You can also find a variety of protocols. These are decision trees. I'm showing just four of them. The two on the left that are sort of brown in color at the top are specific for employees, and the two on the right are specific for students. And it gives you an indication of what you should do if you feel you have come in close contact with someone who's confirmed COVID, or if you're having COVID-19-like symptoms, the flu-like symptoms. It gives you exactly what you should do, what should happen if you're tested, and provides you with resources that you can seek help if you need to. And we encourage you to go to, again, to augusta.edu/covidresources, where you can find these protocols. Now, one thing I want to point out is that our health system and the way that they report their COVID-19 positive information from their employees' point of view, and our university can, in some cases, be very different. The protocols for when you return to work, if you are needing quarantining or isolation, can also be very different. So I just want to encourage folks, if you are an employee of the health system, please be sure that you make that known if you call Employee Health so they can help you navigate the correct protocols. If you are an employee of the university, or a faculty or staff of the university, or a university student, please also let us know that so we can help you understand which protocols fit your particular situation. Some of our clinically-oriented students, nursing, allied health, medicine, and dentistry may have different protocols to when they are allowed back into the clinic, those that have clinical duties. And so we want to make sure that you get the right protocol and that we can help you navigate through that. Also, if you need COVID-19 testing and you are a student, faculty, or staff member of Augusta University, you can call the hotline. Please tell them that you are a student or a faculty member, and we can get you queued as a priority. Typically, can get you tested, if not that day, the next day. And so far, our results have been coming back within 24 hours. And I just want to make a point. We have, since we started doing testing, in the face of all the testing that we're doing, we have almost always been able to get test results back within 24 hours. There have been some situations in which we had, that would cause a few delays, some bumps in the road, but by and large, we have always been able to get test results back very, very quickly. And again, that speaks volumes to the great expertise and the great work that our frontline providers and healthcare providers are doing here at AU Health System. So, that's sort of an overview of kind of where we are and what's going on right now. And we knew there were going to be some questions. And we knew there were going to be some questions, and we've received some questions. So what I'd like to do now is go through some of those questions. Some I've grouped together, and we'll try to answer those either as a group or individually as we can. Now, we realize we're not going to hit everybody's question. We hope to do these town halls with some frequency, and so if you have a specific question, please let us know. You can also go to the FAQs on the resource page that I mentioned earlier. A lot of these questions are already answered there. A lot of questions that you may have, you might be to find answers there. But I wanted to go ahead and just talk briefly about some of these questions. Got a couple of questions about masks, not surprisingly. And a couple of these questions are, what are the consequences for not wearing a mask? It is, we are required now to wear a mask indoors in situations where social distancing is not available, or it's not appropriate, or you can't socially distance. Essentially, masks are required indoors. It's required for faculty, staff, it's required of students. If a student is not wearing a mask, the faculty member can certainly talk to that student in ways that you would talk to a student if the student was disrupting class, being any other method or mechanism. And if you are an employee, you are required to wear a mask at all times when you're indoors, unless you're in a private space, in which, in an office or a closed space, or in a private space that allows you to be socially distanced from anyone else. What are official steps for working with people who cannot wear masks? And what are acceptable face coverings for individuals who are not required to wear these parts as part of their duties? In addition to cloth face mask coverings, we also have available face shields. And I've shown you a couple of examples of what those face shields might look like there. If you have a medical condition and your physician says that it's best to you not to wear an actual face covering, we can make these face shields available for you. Please talk to your manager. If you're a faculty member and you're teaching a class and you have hearing impaired students who need to read lips, please get ahold of Dr. Keller, or his folks will help you get a face shield, so you can protect yourself and your students, and at the same time, allow hearing impaired students to be able to read your lips and be able to communicate in that way. I never thought I'd have to actually give a lesson on how to wear a mask, but these are just three examples. The first example is how you should wear a mask. It's over the nose and the mouth. The second example, and we see this a lot, fortunately, we don't see it a lot here, but you see it a lot where somebody has the mask down over the nose. You need to cover both your nose and your mouth with the mask, and absolutely, a mask down around your chin does nobody any good. And as you can see by the picture, it makes you look pretty ridiculous, too. So that's just a real primer on wearing a mask. And I believe you, folks, I apologize for having to do this, but you know, how many times have we seen somebody with a mask down below their nose? And in terms of what mask, we say the word mask, but the real word is a face covering of some kind. Any sort of cloth face covering, the disposable surgical kind of mask, not the N95 mask, but these sort of masks that you see are very, very effective. We have given two-face masks to every employee and student at Augusta University, and if you've not received them, please contact your manager. If you're an employee, you can go through HR. If you're a student, then by all means, contact the student affairs, and that makes you that you get a mask. We have two, and I've shown you what those two look like here. The gray mask that has the Jaguar logo on it, and the navy blue mask that's just plain. And we still have some of those available. So if you don't have a mask, let us know. We'd be delighted to give you one, or give you two. A couple of questions on keeping campus open. And one question was, why are we risking fully staffing the facility when the cases are not decreasing drastically like everyone thought they would? Well, I hope that some of the information that I've shown you will give you some sense that cases are, in fact, declining. Now, granted, we're just five weeks into the semester, and a lot can happen, but right now, we're in a very good place. Cases are declining, number of patients in the hospital are declining, which is a very good barometer of what the community, including the campus, looks like. The number of COVID-19 positivity rate tests is also declining, was also, is very reflective of that. So I would say that we're not risking staffing up, especially when it comes to the prevalence of COVID. Second question, is it projected for students to return to fully online classes? We do not anticipate that we're going to have to resort to going to fully online classes as we did back in the spring semester. However, and the third question asks, what measures are put in place for future shutdowns similar to the one we've experienced, and whether this has worked and didn't work last time? We have a whole series of contingencies for the entire campus if, in fact, we have to shut down, go back to sending everyone home as we did in March for a short period of time or for the remainder of the semester. But let me be clear, we do not anticipate having to do that. And that will be it. And I'll talk about that decision process in just a minute. But familiarize yourself with those protocols. A tremendous amount of work went in to formalizing those, and I think we have great contingencies in place for every possibility that we can conceive of. As I mentioned, we are optimistic about where we are and where we are with the number of cases and that sort of thing. But we have to stay vigilant. We can't take our foot off the gas. We have to continue to socially distance ourselves. We have to continue to wear a mask. We have to continue to watch our distance, or the three Ws, if you will. And we need to continue to do that as we go through the remainder of this semester, in fact, as we go through the remainder of the calendar year. All right. Questions on teleworking. I had a couple of questions. I understand that teleworking is not feasible for everyone or every department. However, it can be made possible. It should be, and other large universities are studying making a portion of their positions permanently telework. Is Augusta University also considering this? We have made it known that the expectation is for everyone to come back to campus. That's faculty, staff, and students. There are a lot of exceptions to that, and we know that. There are some accommodations that faculty and staff have made, have requested to make, because for a variety of reasons, it is not appropriate or safe for them to be back on campus, and we've made those accommodations. And we are allowing teleworking to take place for those individuals who need accommodations. We're also, I think it's also prudent for us to explore situations in which it makes good business sense, and from a continuity point of view, for employees to be teleworking on a permanent basis. And we are certainly considering those. But those need to be looked at as the exception rather than the rule. And moving forward with the exception of accommodations, teleworking needs to be an exception as opposed to the rule. If we can find departments or subsets of departments, and we could definitively show that productivity is either the same or is fact is increased through teleworking, then we want to encourage managers to think outside the box, and let's see if that makes sense for that to take place on a permanent basis. But that is a process that you must go through, go through your executive vice president, and it's a process to go through HR in order to do that. And I want to hopefully be clear about what we mean by that. All right, testing and reporting. Couple of questions here. Is the university responsible for making staff aware of positive cases? We have a right to know if someone we have been working with has been exposed without compromising the identity of that person. And then another question had to do with the article that appeared in the Chronicle of Higher Education about whether FERPA and HIPAA, in reference to COVID-19, is appropriate. And it says, "The article concluded that it would not violate either one of schools when they notify faculty members as to which student in their face-to-face classes tested positive for the disease. Can the university start notifying instructors as to which of their students test positive, regardless of whether the instructor are listed in any contact tracing?" And this is a hugely important question, a hugely important issue, and I want to try to answer that and provide as much information as we can regarding to that. First off, we want to be clear, we're not going to be notifying instructors as to which of their students test positive for COVID-19 unless the instructor themselves are being considered to be a close contact. And I want to redefine what close contact is in a minute. While it may be at times beneficial to coordinate close contact identification of students in the classroom with specific instructors of record, determination of who a close contact is, or contact tracing, if you will, and contacting these individuals is the responsibility of Student Affairs and Student Health on the student's side, and Human Resources and Employee Health on the employee's side, in conjunction with the Georgia Department of Public Health. It is not the responsibility of individual faculty members, and it is not the responsibility of individual staff members. I want to be clear about that. Contact tracing, identifying individuals who are positive in that sort of way is not the responsibility of faculty or individual staff. That is the responsibility of Student Affairs, Student Health, HR, and Employee Health. If you have a student in your classroom that is sick, they should be treated equally to any other student or any other sickness that you would have. And you should not ask students to provide additional personal information regarding their illness. And Dr. Keller, I don't know if you have any additional comments you want to add to that, or any flavor you want to put to that.
No, it is right what you're saying. What we're encouraging the faculty have done this beautifully so far is they're treating these when a student is absent, they notice they're missing instruction, they're making contact. How are you doing? Are you okay? What can I help with? Making provisions for maintaining instructional continuity while out, regardless of the nature of the illness. So in some ways, while COVID is special and is serious, in another way, when an illness of students out for extended time, the conversation between the faculty and student remains as it was before COVID, an important and essential element of learning. And I would like to encourage or remind our students, they have a responsibility to work with faculty as well, to say, I'm not going to be in class. And students making those contacts shows an ownership for learning, and faculty who are already doing that will just manage that as best they can. So it's part of the core, what our faculty have assumed to do, and they're doing it remarkably well. And I'm just going to say, as I walk around looking in the halls, I am so grateful the way students are managing this strange space we occupy, faculty are as well, and so far, so good, and I'm grateful for that. But I think to your point about, when I'm out, how can I maintain my progress toward completion, and the faculty, student, or manager that are very nicely.
Thank you very much. I couldn't agree more with you. One other point I want to make here is that if you are following the three Ws, if you are, in fact, washing your hands regularly, you're wearing a mask, and you're maintaining six feet distance, or you're watching your distance, there should be no need for heightened concern regardless of who or how many students or staff test positive in the classroom or the office. If one, two students, or three students, or four students are tested positive in your classroom, or one or two or three or four members in your office are test positive for COVID-19, if you have been maintaining six feet distance, if you have been wearing a mask, if you have been washing your hands regularly, there should be no concern for heightened awareness. It's this issue of close contact. I'm going to speak to that again in just a minute, because it's a hugely important concept. Students or employees who do test positive, or who have symptoms, or who have been determined to be a close contact, are immediately isolated or quarantined. They're removed from that environment, classroom or office, and monitored by Student Affairs and Student Health, or by HR/Employee Health. It is not the responsibility of the faculty member to do contact tracing. We may solicit your help in terms of identifying students who may have come in close contact, but if you're maintaining the three Ws in that environment, there should not be a need for that. I was aware of the Chronicle of Higher Education article, but it's important to note that you need to read the entire article, because even the authors point out quite a few caveats associated with both FERPA and HIPAA, especially in a healthcare environment like we have at this institution. And it is the sole opinion of the authors, and those, while I respect their opinions greatly, that have no responsibility for maintaining student or staff confidentiality at AU. That is our job. That is my job, and we're not going to be, we want to do everything we can to protect the privacy of the student and the employee to the best that we can. All right, let's, I'm sorry, wrong way. Here we go. And this issue of close contact, again, is a critical component of, and of all the three Ws, watching your distance, in some ways, is probably the most important. Close contact, it's not just our definition, it's the CDC's definition and the Georgia Department of Health, and it's what we are using to determine if you have been in close contact. It is defined as being less than six feet from a confirmed COVID-19 positive case, an individual, for more than 15 minutes. Less than six feet for more than 15 minutes. And two examples I like to use, if you're in an elevator with someone, and you later discover that that individual is COVID-19 positive, or that individual tells you, I just wanted you to know I was COVID-19 positive, that is not a close contact. That does not mean that you need to be isolated or quarantined if you are less than 15 minutes. If you happen to be in the front seat of a car with someone and you drive to Atlanta, and then they later let you know that they're COVID-19, that's a close contact. And the classroom setting, with very few exceptions, individuals should be six feet apart from each other, they should be six feet away from the instructor, they should all be wearing a mask, and I would hope that you are all washing your hands as frequently as possible. Under those conditions, there should be no need for heightened concern, because under those conditions, there's not been a situation of a close contact. So I hope that becomes clear.
As I kill, the part about that is interesting, too, is in the labs and the clinical spaces require closer contact and closer proximity. The chairs and deans have done remarkable work by elevating care around the protective context and managing those spaces. So we know there's some learning that happens close order, almost at the elbow, and there are specialized protocols which have been provided, that are smart, that are safe, and so there are, you know, learning environments that don't allow the distance that you spoke to, and we've acknowledged that. We've appreciated the expertise of our colleagues, and that has helped us maintain that continuity as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great point. Okay, there was a second group of questions regarding testing and reporting. Why has the AU administration not pushed back against the University System of Georgia's control over individual and local control of the university openings? Given that many campuses are closing amidst spikes in cases among students and faculty, usually within a couple of weeks of returning to campus, why are we not doing random testing and then contact tracing? And is there at least an understanding of what number of infected students or employees will constitute a critical mass for AU, or a trigger warning, if you will, that can trigger exponential growth in infections on campus? What is the adjustment factor, including in the calculations, of this critical mass? And again, this is a hugely important series of questions, and I want to try to be as specific as I can in providing an answer for that. First has to do with our relationship with the University System of Georgia, and let me be very clear. Augusta University is a part of the University System of Georgia, and we, as an individual campus, will not be making decisions on campus closing, et cetera, in isolation, or in independence of close collaboration with the University System of Georgia. We are, I am, in close communication with the University System of Georgia on our current situation. We have been throughout the entire pandemic, and we will continue to be throughout the remainder of COVID-19. AU will not make any recommendations on campus closing based off any one or any group of specific metrics. The University System of Georgia is in constant close communication with the Department of Public Health, the Georgia Department of Public Health, the CDC, and the Governor's Office regarding any decisions of closing on any one campus or of the entire system. And we're not going to be able to, and I know it's frustrating, believe me, but it's just not practical for us to come up with a set bar, or set metrics, or set criteria that would cause us to be concerned about closing camps. Let me try to help you understand why I feel that way. The virus, the COVID-19 virus, what we know about it and how to treat it, has changed dramatically during the 193 days since the first case was reported in Georgia. We know that, because I've been in constant contact with our healthcare experts here and have seen that firsthand. And it will most certainly change as we move forward. Therefore, trying to establish and use static trigger metrics or some adjustment factor to base decisions, it's just not practical. The etiology, the sequelae, the epidemiology, and the patient acuity of COVID-19 is highly dependent on community and hospital settings and making dependent on community and hospital settings, and making generalized decisions on that is also just not practical and not possible. However, we have the benefit of very robust COVID-19 testing data and experience treating COVID-19 patients from the AU health system, which provides us with thorough and up-to-date information on the COVID-19 positivity rate, the case prevalence, and the hospital surge and status planning for such a surge to take place. We also have the benefit of AUHS and MCG tremendous expertise right here on our campus, and I am in constant contact with those individuals. So as much as I'd like to be able to say, here are the metrics that we're going to use, and if we exceed those metrics, I'm going to recommend to the chance that we shut down campus, that is just not practical. Rather, it is a whole series of metrics, of information, of daily gathering thoughts and experiences of our experts that factor into this, and it will most certainly be different tomorrow than it is today. And I wish it was more black and white than that, but this virus is anything but black and white. It is ever-changing, and the whole aspect of how to treat patients, or how patients respond, what type of patients we're talking about, and the prevalence rate is going to change, and we have to be flexible and then move to change with it. So I hope that that provides you with at least some answers to some very specific questions about that. I greatly appreciate the questions, and I hope that at least it lets you know where I stand and how we plan to move forward on that. All right, two questions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Keller here because they have to do with the classroom environment and some of the academics.
Thank you, President Kiel. The question has come up many times about how faculty interact with students. One of those is, students who are away, we're doing hybrid delivery, how can I affirm that they're engaged, they're connected? Can I even expect them to do something besides be on a phone at a distance and play in a game? Absolutely, the faculty can expect that, and here's one reason I say that. A faculty member, you're delivering online, or if you're delivering a hybrid, you have some in front of you, you have some online, you absolutely can expect and ask or tell students, turn your cameras on. Now, one might say, well, wait a minute, my computer doesn't have a camera. No, with the leadership of Dr. Michael Kazdorff, we have computer laptops that if a student finds him or herself with a technology that doesn't allow for a camera, we can have a camera for them to check out through Student Affairs, and it's at the library. So yes, there is no excuse for not turning on your camera if that's what a faculty wants to do. It's part of the engagement that we look for, it's part of the expectation I would want faculty to have, so thank you for asking that. Now, we talk about course delivery a great deal as well, and this gives me an opportunity to talk about what we did, where we are, and what's different going forward, if I might. We rolled into fall term still trying to understand what we're up against, and I want to thank the HR department, Susan Norton and her team, who helped us embrace faculty who needed a workplace adjustment. Because rolling into the fall, there were people who felt there were conditions that they needed to do an alternative delivery, or some version other than what might be considered normal, maybe an online delivery, for example. So we have workplace adjustments, and some students must have walked into a class hoping for one thing, but then they found out it was a hybrid or it was an online. I wish that were not the case, but that's where we were. I don't know how we could have prevented that because safety mattered, and we made those decisions in concert with the chairs and the deans so the faculty could deliver in a way that was safe and smart for that faculty member. Now, to the extent to which a student walks in and a faculty member is teaching a class, and then I'll use the word arbitrarily decides to change, we've never encouraged that, and I wouldn't want that to be the case, and I hope that's not the case, and I'll expect my, you know, chairs and deans are already working with their faculty, and I have absolute trust in their figuring that part out. And I would encourage students, if you run into a problem, of course, talk to your faculty, talk to your chair, talk to Student Affairs, our Dean of Students. Absolutely, we have a whole network of people who are advocating for your success. Now, this is where we are now, and I was anxious about what that might mean in terms of students being engaged, we spoke to that a little bit, about students staying in classes, about faculty feeling like it's working. I am so pleased with the way folks are managing this, but I also recognize we're right now already planning for spring. And we've assumed a posture that says, plan for the spring delivery. I'm talking to students, I'm talking to faculty, I'm talking to staff. Plan for spring to feel a lot like what we're doing right now. Plan for hybrid, for those faculty, let me go to faculty specifically, who are under a workplace adjustment. HR has sent out an email about 1:00 a message to the whole group today that said, if you need an extension of your workplace adjustment for the spring term, please email, and there's an email in the notification, and for an extension of that accommodation. For those faculty who, and that would be done, by the way, we're doing that all the way through this month, so to the end of this month, September, that opportunity for that request is open. For those faculty who might think a workplace adjustment is in order for conditions, they can make application for that as well through the normal protocol through HR, and I encourage them to do that, but do it before the end of this month. Here's why. Students are now preparing and being advised for their courses for the spring, and they're trying to think about which courses they'll take, and come October, they're going to come up to a point where they're going to decide, I want that course because it's online, or I want that course because it's hybrid, or that course because it's face-to-face. We want that to be as much as we can in place. And so we're hoping to have by October the 15th, right, and I grabbed that day just because it's the middle of the month, and it gives us a little space for the registrar to prepare for that, but we want to have in place all the changes of modality that we can, and have it sort of ironed out as best we can. There will be exceptions, there'll be things that surprise us, but we want the students to be able to then, right after that, when they do the actual registration in October, they'll know for what they're registering. So let me just say what I've, repeat that. So this month, faculty are encouraged to make application either for initial or extension of their workplace adjustments through HR now. We know that the deans and associate deans are working now with their faculty to load schedules, to make sure the modalities are fixed so that the modalities are not changed. And we want all that noise to have been completed by the middle of October. Lastly, Student Affairs, Dr. Susan Davies, has also encouraged her students who seek an accommodation or adjustment to make those requests early and now so that they too can make an adjustments, knowing what they have to do going into the spring term. So we've learned from what fall brought us, we didn't do it exactly right, the faculty and students did beautifully with what we had, but we've learned from that and we're trying to prepare for spring in such a way that conditions like this point about, oh, I walked in and something's changed from what I planned, will be minimized. So that's our plan going forward. I think the Testing Disability Service team has done remarkably in terms, they've received from students an accommodation request or a learning adjustment. You spoke to a mask or a face covering versus a shield, an example of that, and they've done that well. Well, if we do this early enough, we'll be more than likely prepared for that when it happens in January. And so for that, I want to say thank you on the early on, both with HR, for Student Affairs, for Academic Affairs, all those groups together are making good sense out of a rather peculiar space we find ourselves.
Thank you very much, and I want to just echo a couple of comments that Dr. Keller makes, I think is very, very important. Going into the spring, and like it is today as a matter of fact, the default is an in-person classroom experience for every student. That's the goal, that is the default position. Realizing, as Dr. Keller, as she pointed out, there are a slew of situations in which that is not possible, and there are accommodations for faculty, there may be accommodations for students, there may be classroom constraints, there may be a variety of reasons as to why that's just not possible. But the decision to offer a course online as opposed to the default is not to be made by the individual faculty member. We are just not in a position where we can do that. That has to be made in conjunction, either through an accommodation, as I've already been pointed out, or in conjunction with your department chair and dean. And there has to be a very, very good reason as to why a particular course, unless it's already planned to be that way, of course, we do have some online courses, and we want to have more of those as we move forward, but not just due to the fact that an individual does not want to teach in a classroom environment. That's the default, and we have to move forward going with that.
No, President Kiel, I was pleased to note that we didn't have the problem that our word we have. There wasn't a lot of random, excuse me, choices, but what we looked at is students, I was kind of curious where they landed. We had about, at the undergraduate level, and that nice number of enrollment, aren't we pleased to see that? But the students typically pick something that was a hybrid or a blended experience. They might pick one online, but lots of face-to-face, and then, you know, a lot of our classes were set up as hybrid initially anyway, which emphasized the person-to-person contact, but allowed for some distance delivery. About 9% of our undergraduates chose to do fully online experience. And, you know, in my view of this is, that means the other percent of that is having contact on campus, and that's what we wanted. A dream, you know, it'd be good, and we've learned from this crisis that we have capacity to do some things with great skill, some innovation here is done, the instructional innovation team at the center has lifted this whole matter to a level of being manageable and I think sometimes even enjoyable. So wouldn't it be kind of a nice moment if in the fall, a year away, students look and say, well, there's two sets of courses offered a variety of ways, I think I'll just pick that one. So we'll have almost like parallel universes to a way that this would be something that would become our new reality.
Absolutely, and we've had that conversation before, and I think you'll be hearing more about how can we position our university moving forward to provide the widest spectrum of opportunities for students, because every student may have a different preference for how they were taught, and we want to give our faculty opportunities to do that, but so I appreciate that very much. All right, I've got a couple miscellaneous questions. We'll try to get to these quickly. First is, earlier this year, there was talk about furloughs, will there be any required furloughs? And not, I mean, the plan for this particular semester is that there will, this fiscal year, rather, is that there will be no furloughs. We thought we were going to have to do that, but fortunately, the budget cuts, although were significant, were not as severe to require furloughs. But let me be very clear that we still got a lot of this fiscal year left to go through. As you probably know, the state of Georgia has something called an amended budget, which the legislature will vote on in mid-January or so, and that's when they typically make adjustments to the budgets that were established starting in the previous July. And it could very well be, depending on how things go in the state of Georgia from a fiscal point of view, that we may be asked to take additional budget cuts starting in January. That is always a possibility, it's a possibility every single year, not just in the face of COVID. And so we don't anticipate that, but that is a possibility, and I think it's something we need to be mindful of. So you may have seen that we are being very conservative in terms of how we spend our budgets, very conservative in anticipation for potential for additional budget cuts down the road. Right now, I don't anticipate that, but we always want to be more on the conservative side, especially in these uncertain times right now moving forward. Hopefully, there won't be any furloughs, we don't anticipate any. All right, I think, Dr. Keller, you're going to address the next one about FMLA.
Yeah, and of course, HR is much more deeply invested, can speak to it, but I will speak to this thematically, but, you know, the question about fair and equitable treatment, that's an expectation we have of everybody, and will not accept anything less than that. But as it relates to those people who are qualified, who've made applications or qualify for FMLA, clearly have a need for that, and they are by law. I mean, federal and state guidelines and care around this, and our HR department is set up for this, they are protected in that space. And I would just say at this point, if there's ever a hint about someone on leave that there's, this is not fair and ethical, our HR is ready to advocate for that person, and let us know. Don't sit quiet if you wondered, let us know.
Yeah, that's a great point, and one thing I would encourage folks to do that, if you are an employee, in addition to calling Employee Health or calling HR regarding testing for COVID, quarantine, those sorts of things, get a hold of HR about what sort of leave options are available for you if you do find yourself, or you come in close contact with someone, or you're having symptoms. And if you do need FMLA accommodations, call HR if you have any questions. We have one of the best HR programs in the state, there's no question about it, and they always stand ready to help you. So thank you for that. There was a question about why are more hand sanitizer dispensers in the JSAC? And I'm glad you asked this question, and I turned around and asked Dr. Carla Leep and our facilities folks about that the first part of the week, and I've already got an answer for you. So I received this email, this is hot off the computer. This is from Tom Dunaway, and he says, "Four additional hand sanitizers are being installed in the JSAC today. New locations include the first floor south entrance, entering from the amphitheater, first floor east entrance, entering from University Hall. First floor added a second dispensing of food service areas, and second floor lobby area between TV lounge and common areas. Additional stations may be considered once the larger meeting rooms are scheduled again." So we do try to listen when you have questions or suggestions, and I think this is one we're going to fix, but if you notice that there needs to be additional hand sanitizers, or if they're empty, or if you need additional cleaning supplies, then please work through your departments. We have a process to go through to try to make sure that we have, that the campus is environmentally as clean as possible, especially during this time. So I thank you for that question, and I thank our facilities folks for jumping on it so quick.
And I know we're running out of time, but every week, I swear, one of the meetings I enjoy is we go right now and look at what new requests we've made, made decisions, deployed our assets there, and so please let us know.
Absolutely. I think it's the last question, so how are the athletics events and classes changing due to the current situation of uncertain times, and how are student athletes being kept healthy and safe? This particular semester, most of our athletic programs are a part of the Peach Belt, with the exception of men's and women's golf, and that's at the Division One level. The Peach Belt has decided to postpone all fall sports with the exception of cross-country, and we are following suit with what the Peach Belt is doing. So for us, that's volleyball will be postponed into probably the January timeframe, January, February timeframe, end of the spring semester. We are allowing and encouraging our student athletes to stay active, so they're going through training, whether in the weight room or conditioning training, or practices and those sorts of things are being encouraged and being allowed for the fall sports as well as the spring, as the spring sports, winter sports, which will be basketball, baseball, softball. The NCAA has very precise and well-defined guidelines regarding student athlete safety, as does the Peach Belt, and we are adhering to every single one of those. This frequent testing of our student athletes when it comes time to competition, the NCAA is requiring that an athlete be tested 72 hours before competition to make sure that he or she is negative, and we're going to be following suit with that. We're trying to provide our student athletes with as much protection as absolutely possible, and every student athlete has the opportunity, if they choose not to participate, they can do so and have sure, and have certainty that their scholarship will be protected. Again, that's something the NCAA is also mandating. So we take the safety of all of our students to heart, but we especially take the safety of our student athletes who by nature of their particular sport are going in close contact. All right, so that's a little bit about kind of where we are now, what's going on. I tried to answer, Zach and I did try to answer some of your questions, so I thought we'd just say, you know, what about tomorrow? We've kind of talked about that a little bit already, but what about on-campus events, conferences, and workshops? What about visitors? How about commencement? And then what do we do about spring semester? And the short answer is, we just don't know all the answers to these questions. We are now, on a regular basis, beginning to look at what events are normally planned throughout this semester as well as the spring semester, to determine, can we make decisions on whether they can be allowed to go forward or not? Again, the default on this is that any group gathering should be done like we're doing right now, should be done in a virtual manner. Conferences and workshops, seminars, ground rounds, they should be done virtually and not bringing folks together. Visitors to campus, we are discouraging visitors to come, but we know there are situations in which that needs to happen, especially when we're interviewing candidates for faculty or staff positions. especially when we're interviewing candidates for faculty or staff positions. And we want to encourage you to do that, but please seek guidance and, and permission, if you would, from, from your supervisors, or from the executive vice president for those sort of situations. Commencement, we just don't know. We just don't know yet. I, is, we'll, we'll try to make that decision as soon as we can. We want to try to provide our students with a commencement. That's one of the highlights of any student's collegiate career. And, and we want to be able to do that in person, but we've got to consider the safety of the students and their families, as well as the faculty and staff who would participate. And that, that will be foremost in our mind, and we just don't know. So spring semester, I think a spring is going to be just like you see this particular semester. Dr. Keller, as Art referred to, a good bit of that, and we're already beginning to plan what spring semester might look like. There's a lot of talk nationally and internationally about a, about a, a, a virus protection for, for COVID-19, a vaccine. And we're watching very carefully, very closely to see when that would develop. That would certainly change things. And, and so we need to be always mindful that what, what we know today is not going to change tomorrow. It will definitely change tomorrow. And we need to be aware of that and think about that as you move ahead. But we're going to plan for the spring semester to look just like this one, starting off. And hopefully, as we get through the semester, we might be able to loosen some of the restrictions up. The best-laid plans of my cement, as you know, often go awry. We, we always need to be aware of that. And the only thing we can absolutely guarantee is that change is going to be constant. I know we are all weary of change, and I know you're all tired of, of being told to remain nimble and flexible. But that is where we are now. That's what we have to do. And that is what you all have been doing so incredibly well. And we are very, very grateful for the tremendous work that our faculty and our staff are doing, day in and day out, to make sure that our number-one priority, our students and our patients are cared for and dealt with in the most appropriate way. So we thank you very much. And let me just leave you with, again, the three Ws. Wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear a mask. And folks, it really, really, really is just that simple. We're all in this together, and we will get through it together. And there will be a, a normal, I promise you. It may not seem that way now, but we will get there if we all work together. And we can't thank you enough for being with us today. We can't thank you enough for all the great work that, that you do. We look forward to continuing this semester and great success. And I'll just have to end by saying, go Jags!